I'll meet the order. I want to thank you and everyone in the studio for your concern and by being here. First item on the agenda is roll call. President County Board, thank you for your time and your dedication. Next item is the agenda. We've had an opportunity to look it over to hear a motion that we set the agenda printed.
I made that motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both say?
Carry it.
Next item is approval of minutes from our previous meeting. That'd be in the February 17th workshop, February 18th regular meeting. Do I hear a motion with such a print?
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
I hear a second? Second. Mayor Prettencha. Any comments or questions? Comments, changes, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both say?
Carry it.
City Manager, correct? No public hearing?
No public hearing.
Bill's for presentation. Ms. Unismore is unable to be with us tonight, so should Bill Barton and Mary Harrison speak with us on the week in time.
She did not be here, but hopefully you all heard her last night. She primarily wanted to extend her thanks to everyone, to you mayor, to Mayor Pro, Tim Shaw, to everyone else on the council, additionally to the Darien News for the good work that they did in publicizing this, for all the law enforcement who were out there on Butler Island that day to keep everyone safe, for St. Cyprian's and for Darien Methodist Church, also for the folks in Brunswick who are here, for the Chamber, and for the Downtown Development Authority. I think and I agree with you just entirely, it was a pretty good pass for the first chance.
Yes.
It turned out well. I know that she and the rest of the members of that committee are looking for better things next year, hopefully an expanded program. Certainly thanks to Mandy at the very, very, very last minute.
[laughing]
Last minute, we got a very generous grant which allowed to expand even for that day at dinner and some other things. Allowed for some great things to sell, week in time commemoration bags and T-shirts and...
And sea shirts.
That's about it. Just she wanted to thank everyone and she's looking forward to getting a bigger event next year. And I know I heard her say this last night, so I will just reiterate because I have her notes, the official Unismore notes, that as you all think about, she was specifically thinking about the Houston House over on Butler Island, but as you all think about the opportunities within the city for the development of structures and buildings, rehab, just to make sure that opportunities might be there for groups such as the Week in Time, the Goleguichi community, as a way to sort of anchor that community and the programs they offer. So again, many thanks for all that you all did. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We do appreciate everything that you two and all of our workmen did. I do would like to say I'd like to see the Goleguichi Committee picked back up and get the members and all on it. Also, I'd like to say a happy birthday to Ms. Unismore.
Yes.
Happy birthdays and when you see her around, tell her happy birthday.
Goodbye.
Okay, next, that's all of our business presentation. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. May it be more blessed.
Blessed, man.
Ms. Mandy Harrison.
Yes.
Blessings.
Come on in. Just, again, this will be a very short presentation. The blessing of the fleet has been postponed. We're waiting for additional information to decide when the date will be that we reschedule it. We are working diligently with all of our sponsors, all of our vendors, all of our boat captains, everybody figuring all this out. It's been a learning experience, I think, for anyone that's in the event planning business this year. We're all going, wow, what do we do? I appreciate all of y'all's help and guidance with postponing the event. I know that that was not an easy decision for any of us because this is our biggest economic impact for three years for a lot of our businesses and it's a tough one. So I am saying that we are not canceling it. We are postponing it. It will happen in 2020.
Yes.
Again, thank you. The state has put our application for a license on hold and when we get the dates correct, they'll reissue it. I don't know if we're going to have to do another application and you and I can talk.
Right.
About that.
Sure.
Okay. But thank you again for all y'all did for us. I was just so commenting. Really appreciate y'all.
Thanks for the hard work. We appreciate your office's dedication with all of our work. Next item, unfinished business. Appoint two members of the Planning Commission. It's a four-year term. Their term will start August, I mean March 1st. We will take action on that tonight. Again, March 1st.
That's more March 1st.
They will expire February 29th of 2020. We had a ceremony. I'm glad to see we had a ceremony. People interested in it took some good time and consideration and going through it. Two, we picked out of it and I hear a motion that we appoint Bill Barton and Griffin Lotz to the Planning Zoning Commission.
Make it.
I have a motion by Council.
A second.
Also, Mayor Pro Ten, Charlie, do I hear a second?
A second.
Have a second for the council. Good year. Any questions or comments?
Those two are replacing Charlie Platts and Paul Nix. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Any more comments, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both say? Carry it. Next one is to appoint two members to the Darien Downtown Development Authority. That's also a four-year term. But then, also start March 1st?
Yes, sir.
Okay, again, we had a couple good names on this one. Two, we picked out. Do I hear a motion to appoint Bob Bates and Jackson Thomas?
I make a motion.
I have a motion. I hear a second. Comments or questions?
And those two are replacing Fred Straggles and Russ Corbin, correct?
Right.
Okay. Yes, sir. We'll replace Russ Corbin and Fred Straggles. Okay. Any more comments, questions? Do I hear? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both say?
Carry it.
We do appreciate your time, your dedication, your interest in it, and look forward to working with you. Much to register, manage to finish it up. All of our unfinished business.
That's correct.
New business, financing for the new maintenance of the law enforcement building.
Yes, sir.
We're not giving it for him?
No, sir.
We're not giving it for him. It's a daily struggle.
Okay, one thing before we get into that, just comments and stuff. I get to clarify and everything. Last night we were talking about this where we said that we were waiting on, we had a few issues and all. There is nothing wrong with our books or anything like that. There is nothing wrong with our audit and everything. It's just getting in touch with y'all. There's them getting back with us and us getting our things.
Absolutely. Nothing wrong with our numbers.
That's why I want to make sure we're everything.
But no, our numbers are probably the best and most accurate they've probably ever been in city's history, to be honest with you.
Appreciate it.
The software updates we have allow for some of the clothes, the rest of them. We have real-time access to our budget numbers, line item and overall. This was a completely separate issue and that really turned out not to be much of an issue. But the vehicle we were going to use to finance this is what turned out to be the issue. And in the end, we reached terms with Southeastern Bank. I joked with them a little bit, this process being drug dealing that I've helped them a little bit. We actually got a rate of about 40 basis points to the better. Southeastern extended a rate of 2.92% to its finances and that is outstanding, I can tell you. And don't forget, this not only involves the construction of the new building, but the purchase of the land itself, which we've been leasing to Southeastern Bank. That does a couple of things for us from a cash flow perspective. That will remove the property from the actuarial tax rolls and we've been paying the actuarial taxes that will remove the actuarial tax rolls. And the other side of that is we'll vacate our location out of CRC. It re-leased from them now. That'll free that space up. And again, CRC has a tenant ready to move in. We've got a good relationship with them and I'm glad for them that they have somebody ready to come in and fill that spot up because they've done a lot for us and as they'll tell you, we've done a lot for them. They have a really good relationship and I'm glad to have them in here. So we free those lease payments up to both entities, at least the lease of the property now, as well as the lease at CRC building. That'll free that up and put that into one unit. So the total principal now is 1.3 million on the borrowing, but remember, there's an existing debt of approximately 450,000 in Southeastern now that's being reincorporated back into this debt. I call it debt. It's really a capital lease, but that's the outstanding capital lease amount. So what we've got is the new money we've got is about 850,000, which is what we've contracted with Confer to do. And those guys are ready to go. I spoke to them yesterday. They were hoping this turned out well, your meeting, and they're ready to go. They're chomping a bit to go. They're excited about it. And I'm excited about it and notable as the department is too. They're ready to come back in the city. So if we approve this tonight, I'll be honest with you, I don't have, that interest rate's unbeatable and with the economic uncertainty, I'm glad Southeastern still extended that rate to us and they did. So it's my recommendation that we agree with financing the building. We'll be using GMA's bricks and mortar program. It'll be a purchase, technically a purchase by GMA with an installment sale back to us and we'll lease it from them through the term of the installment sale at the conclusion of that cycle. So it's my recommendation you authorize a borrowing of 1.3 million at 2.92% to both purchase the property and pay off that capital lease by purchasing the property and instruct our new municipal law enforcement.
What is the percentage?
2.92.
2.92.
And that's about 70101?
That's right. That's correct.
Okay. Got here a motion that we approved this financing for the new maintenance of the law enforcement building?
I make the motion.
I have a motion by council. Lady Goodyear, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second for councilman. Fellas, any comments, discussion? Comments, discussions? If we approve this tonight, we can expect to get started.
While I'm looking at a return email from GMA council right now, while I do not see it, that actually surprises me because I know they're ready to go too. So it could be within the next couple of weeks.
Is that the email?
That's my little.
Okay.
Sure.
Any more comments, questions?
Mayor, the only reason I hesitate to say that is a lot of places are short-staffed right now.
Oh, yeah.
People are working from home. We're in kind of strange territory right now. Without that, I would say yes, but I hesitate to fully say within two weeks would be staffing issues. Everybody can handle it.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go out as ordinary. This is a big thing. Honestly, Chief Allen, you gotta comment your last note before we get into this. I'm not putting you on the spot, but I mean, fire department, get ready for your next.
Y'all did say we're ready, but I'm tired of being out there. This is where we belong. This is where we do our work and kind of to work in town and go out there and take care of your paperwork. I mean, the people need us here and this is where we want to be. And I want to thank you guys for working so hard to do this for it. We really do appreciate it. Thank you.
You've been pretty much most of the meetings with us and also you agree to everything that looks good to you and all. We do appreciate your time and catching on with police and others and our police department board that we had. I do appreciate everybody. Okay, I'm going to call this for questions. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both say?
Carry it.
You go ahead and send an email.
I'm ready to get started.
Next one is domestic hauler tipping fee. You gonna give us a little update on this?
Yes, Mayor. Based on some communications I had with surrounding communities, it's my recommendation that we implement a $75 flat fee for domestic waste water haulers who use our plant. We're certainly willing to provide that service, but I think over the last little bit here, our current rates are low. So I recommend that flat fee. I think it's more accurate when it comes to the processing of our waste when we do that for the folks. And I think right now we're probably averaging about $18 to $20 a tip. I think you were present when Keith agrees that we're losing on you, but I don't mind providing the service, but I don't want us to lose on you because in the end, that reflects back out to the folks who are paying their waste work.
And just to clarify, everybody, we're talking about the set tank trucks where they pump up the set of tanks and they bring it and dump it in our waste treatment container. And we do have a couple from our counties that want to... Do I hear a motion that we impose a $75 flat fee for domestic hauler tipping fee?
I'll make that motion, but I did have a comment.
Okay. I got a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
I got a second by councilman. Good year. Go with your comments.
Just a question in this, maybe city manager can answer. The Sheriff's Department, the jail, how much are they paying for our sources?
Same or is that a different topic?
It's a different topic. You're really paying fees and folk and currently they don't pay in fees for our handling of their waste work.
Another question. Do we know how much is coming from the jail?
The waste water at the jail is not metered, but you posed that question a few minutes ago and I was able to contact Keith. His best estimate would be around 144,000 gallons. That's his best estimate. And that is not, he says, do not stake him on that.
That's just a guess, man.
That's the guess. And I mean, it's an educated guess, but it is a guess because it's not metered.
And I think before a lot of our trouble was coming from some of the stuffs that people pushed down.
I think if you go to our bar screen, we've got the largest collection around the middle rack. We've got forty bottles, I guarantee you that.
It's a serious, we...
It is.
It's a serious matter. Our waste water treatment plant, we're spending a lot of money and that is when we hit these tipping fees, it is going to help, but still, I mean, we're growing city and that's what we did. We invested our money out there and every penny counts.
Chief Allen, I'll put you on the spot again, but you worked in that department for a little while. You got a comment on that?
I did have a comment as far as the Darien's office. They help us immensely as far as the medical and stuff like that goes for our inmates. They absorbed probably 90% of that. They absorbed a lot of it. And so, you know, it's kind of like a tit-for-tat thing. I mean, they're helping us. We're also helping them as well.
Well, I know in the past there was a trade-off with they were housing all our inmates.
They house all our inmates.
Do they charge now for inmates?
I pay $45 basically, $50 a day.
A lot of that is in our...
In our state.
It is, but I was just wondering, the only thing I can think that they really need to do out there is have a screen inside their waste water. There's a vandal. There should probably be something they could do.
Well, we talked about a bar screen and that that's been discussed for quite a while now. That's not in place yet, but I know that is on there.
That's something that we can probably get into at a different time. We go here with this tipping fee thing here and get that over with. Any more comments, questions on the tipping fee? Charging $75 flat fee and that is pretty much what they charge around other areas.
Yes, sir. That's right. That's right.
It wasn't...
That's a reasonable cost. You're talking seven and a half cents per thousand gallon truck. It is completely cool, which they're almost never putting a little bit still. That's basing that rate on that.
But it wasn't a figure we just throwing out there.
No, sir.
Any more comments, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both say?
Carry it.
Thank you. Next item, purchase of a fire ladder truck. And on all of these items, I know we're kind of going through them pretty quick tonight. They are big, big money projects. We go into long discussions. Some of this we go into probably more discussion than we need to. At our workshops, I encourage everybody to come to our workshop or maybe they can record our workshops for the ones that are showing. But the workshop is very important because that's where y'all get the citizens get to give their input on everything and all before we get down to it. I have a motion that we purchase a fire ladder truck.
I make the motion that we purchase it.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Any comments or questions?
Mayor, just briefly, just to point out the incredible work, quite frankly, that you did on this in the beginning and you continue to do. This fire truck's going to be purchased for $47,000 and we use FOS funds to do that. And you also, quite frankly, negotiated the disposition of a couple vehicles.
You did.
Oh, I agree. But I'll tell you, you did a fantastic job on that. And I think it's safe to say that the two vehicles that we're disposing of, the net value of those is negative.
The fire trucks.
Yeah, and the amount of repairs that would be required to get those functional and operational. They really have no value and you negotiated taking that and got an incredible deal of them. So I agree to those terms and brought them back to the council. When I was there, I think you did a fantastic job and I'll point out, but I see some, we've got some firefighters in here tonight and they put that truck through the rent and they put it through full drafts. I think they were up there past 10 o'clock one night. I was on the phone with Chief Corbok and discussing the truck. Drove by, see it and Mr. Sewell was out there again, still working on it. They've identified some small issues, but by and large, we're getting a fantastic truck here. And we, our community needs it. We've got two apartments now that have multiple floors and potentially a hotel here that's going to have multiple floors. So it's something we need for the citizens. The chief, I know he's not here tonight, but he's working. He has, we had his full recommendation for this purchase and his department. I know they're here as well. I know they're happy and excited about it. And I know you're on that department, volunteer, and I know you're excited about it.
Well, we ready to get them, fellas, truck. They need equipment.
That's right. Again, thank you for the work you did. I want to...
We got some of our firefighters here with us. I think Sewell's captain. So if you would, y'all stand up. If you would, turn your camera to the firefighters there and let's let people see our firefighters.
So you aren't here.
If you want to introduce your firefighters here, we're proud of them.
You have a friend. Gee, thanks. I'm Captain Sewell. This is Lieutenant Perry. This is one of our firemen, Matt Agathon. The truck, yeah, we're going to need it and it's a great price.
I want for you to argue that truck, yeah, market price.
Truck does look bad. $250,000. We get it for 47 and we getting rid of two trucks that is deadly.
I praised it as having no value.
We do appreciate all the time doing everything.
Thank you for working for that.
Yeah, we appreciate all the labor and...
Thank you guys for the work y'all did.
Thank you so much, sir.
Yeah.
We also do have... Yeah, that's right. Appreciate everything. We don't want that bucket dumped in you like, you know. Okay, have a motion and a second. Any more comments, questions?
I just had one quick one. It's the simple fact that...
You're on the form, too.
Listen, you know, this is about them because, you know, we don't, you know, just like our police officers, sometimes we don't need them till we need them and we need to recognize them all the time. But, you know, we keep calling the fire truck and it is, it is, and you know, sometimes they say a deal is too good to be true. And that's what I told each one of them when I talked with them. I said, you know, but they looked at this truck and they looked it over top to bottom for three days before they said it's in. Sometimes you do find a diamond in the rough. And thanks to the mayor and to all of y'all that we found it. The company did book and they knew what type of budget we had. They knew we couldn't afford it. 250, or, you know, when Sewell and Perry went up north, you know, they brought us back a $1 million deal. We can't afford one of them trucks right now. But this is, this ladder truck is, it is, and it is from the hard work from our mayor and I appreciate all of y'all's work and making sure that this truck is what we need. So thank you all.
We do appreciate it. Do appreciate it. Any more comments, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both say?
Carry it.
Thank you. We do appreciate it. Thank you. That's all of our, on our agenda, everything else. Anything else? Okay, council report.
Councilman Butler, would you like? Yeah. Oh, I just, what's on my heart? Well, I just like, I just want to commend our firefighters on job we did on the truck and police officers are all sticking together and, you know, wanting to get the new building and, you know, to get back to the city to protect all of us. And I just want to thank all the citizens coming out to the meeting and may God bless each and every one of you.
Mayor Brett Jameson.
I just have something short to ask. There's something short. On the coronavirus, this one, they wanted to take it serious because it is serious. Make sure that you follow all instructions. If they say don't go outside, they say don't go in, don't do it because sometimes we think things are not as serious, but this one is. And just be safe as possible. Watch out for your families. Make sure the elderly is taken care of and you check on them. That's it. And everyone's doing a good job as we move forward in this 2020. Yeah, because we will have a blessing of the fleet, like Mandy. Yeah, we will. By the grace of God, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And firefighters, keep up the good work. Please.
Councilor Goodyear.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Key.
Well, a couple of things. One, I echo Mr. Butler, Councilman Butler. It is, you know, our firefighters and our police officers, we need to recognize them all the time. But our, we had our last meeting, we had a discussion about our, the board, which our downtown development board. And tonight, we put two new members on there. This council... This council, we do not hire their executive director. We don't fire their director and we don't direct their director. All the citizens do is pay their director. So I thought that, you know, when this downtown development authority started, I don't believe it was meant for the city to flip the bill for 15, 20 years. I don't believe that. I believe what we did is we got them started off in the right foot and they have grand, they have prosperous. Now they have a large budget and I think it's time for them to take over and pay their director and our citizens hold back. At this time, you know, money is very important. The first of the year, what did this council do? We reduced every one of our, not our salaries, but we reduced our training pay. That's a huge step. But we have to save money where we can. There's going to be some hard times coming, we know that. And these things like this wastewater treatment plant, these firefighters, our police, it costs money to run this city. And we have to be able to keep the money in the city. We have to. We cannot, we cannot hold this council. I respect everyone up here for the work they do because Mr. Barton's prayer said a lot. You know, our, our city, you know, you see, you come down, you see, you see TK sign. He gives away whatever, he gave away Valentine's presents on this city. This city needs a whole lot more TKs. But we got a lot of TKs here. We do. In these time, times that we have, we need to be more like him. And thank you for your prayer, Bill, and thank y'all. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Starting out off then, I'd like to recognize Councilman Sking. He, the state, state lines club board has appointed him and I would say that's one of the two people that served on that board. From our area, so we do want to thank you for that, doing dedicated work there for us. The other thing is public works, public works got to seem looking good. So we want to thank Wayne and Norma Jean and crew and all for that, to do it good and everything. The other thing is, I've been walking ditches, drainage ditches and all. And I said, please don't throw your washing machines and your leaves and everything in drainage ditch. Pull it outside of the road, see if you pick it up and never dispose it. Sit outside the road and some junk man will come by and get it, but please don't throw it in that drainage ditch. So we got that taken care of and hopefully we get it all worked out. But I do want to thank each and every one and for all that we're doing. And I've been asked questions and everything. No, we haven't closed restaurants down yet. No, we hadn't stopped a few more than 10 people meeting in area, but it's probably coming. I think South Carolina's closing their restaurants down tomorrow, takeout only. Florida's already done theirs and so it's coming. So my heart is torn again. It's torn during the storm, it's torn again. We got places like Bed and Breakfast, Motel and all, buzzer reservations. We got the servers and all, like the restaurants and all is coming. So let's, let's try to get up to it if we can't go out and eat or something or it's taking longer to do a takeout instead of. And please don't criticize the people that are in there trying to work, trying to get something. If you don't like the way you're being served, go to grocery store and put it home. So, but they're, that's mostly the young people, but they're, they're doing their best. I do want to thank the council and our city manager for stepping in and taking over. And I think he's going to give us a little more update on the, on this virus and all, but let's be real careful with it. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into, into that aspect of it, I just wanted to thank you guys had tough decisions to appoint these members to this board. We had some outstanding applicants. And if you did apply and you weren't chosen this time, please do again. Please do not take that as a reflection of some sort of rejection. We had excellent applicants this time. And I wanted to thank the incumbents that served that were not reappointed. And I don't want them to take that as a reflection. I know this, this council said you were ready and you heard from a lot of citizens, you're all ready to appoint new people to boards and new positions and shake things up. Want to thank Chairman Quarterman and Mr. Stragles for serving on that board. And Chairman Fox and Mr. Nick, I think, I think they did great jobs. It's not a reflection on the job they did. I think y'all heard from a lot of citizens, they wanted new faces on the board. And congratulations to those that were selected. As I told Councilman Butler, when you got elected, be careful what you're looking for, you just might get it. Y'all got it. So everybody obviously has been bombarded all day long with coronavirus. Been on a lot of calls, a lot of information going around, lots of information from Dr. Davis, our DPH district director. I was on a call with, with Ad Popple, county attorney Ad Popple and county manager Patrick South yesterday with the, with Georgia's emergency management agency. And, you know, right now, I think the best we can say is do the best we can do. We don't have a handle on this yet. And one of the strangest things, I think you saw the governor make a decision on the last thirty or so school districts in the state that did not close their schools. He made the decision for them. I think what we got and we've heard on council reports is that children show little to no sympathy with it. They can carry this virus and give it to their grandparents and that's a very, very dangerous and severe situation. This virus is hitting older people and those with immune, immunodeficiencies and compromised immune system very, very hard. I think the mortality rate is starting among that, among that category of folks. So folks have asked what we intend to do. Well, I spoke, we had an apartment head meeting with our folks. I told them we've got a city to run, we got to keep our folks safe. I met with the police department individually and the fire department. Unfortunately for those folks, they're going to be getting the phone calls. I think some people are already calling about, you know, we've seen some national reports, people calling 911 and our stores not having toilet paper. So for whatever reason, those guys are at the forefront and they get bombarded with these calls. And sometimes we forget about them, we take them for granted. And, you know, they've got families and lives too. So I've instructed them to be as safe as they can and we still got to protect the public. But take care of them, take care of our city and they are, they're doing a good job of it. And they really don't have a choice. They got to be out there and do it. And they're doing that and we appreciate them for doing that. We have closed the lobby in conjunction with the county's done the same. And Darentel are probably two, three largest utility and payment providers here in the city of Georgia. Power office is closed, but they're doing the same thing and they're also closing lobbies. We have Dropbox here. But please do not think that if they're in emergency, you need us to not let you build them. We're going to do that. Priscilla and her staff have been working real hard on, on balancing that between the safety of our staff and the safety of other citizens and being able to get that done. As you mentioned earlier, Norma Jean and those folks are still going. They were out there today doing their hard work. I saw them on the site morning. So the city's going on, it is. And thanks to the leadership that you guys and ladies have provided over the last little bit of time here, the last few years, we fortunately have some breathing room for this. But we really don't know what it holds long term or how long this is going to last. I mean, I'm hoping this 15 day period they're giving us, we're going to have something, maybe a vaccine and we're going to see a slowing of the virus. I'm hoping that and we all are. But if not, we're prepared to do what we, what we've got to do. As I told the apartment heads, I told the police officers, I'm right in this room. If this reaches a stage, we have layoffs or cutbacks, I'll be first one to sacrifice along with them. I'm not going to ask anybody to do anything I wouldn't do myself. So we're, we're preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. And our, our citizens, I want to remind you, please contact us. Please don't call 911 about toilet paper and things like that. Those guys are busy. But if you have an emergency, call it, they will be there to help you. And we're discussing some other options for senior citizens here in the city too. Getting them some assistance because those are folks that really need, they haven't ordered to do that yet, but they really need a shelter in place right now until we got further word on this thing is slowing down or not. Closest case I think we have is Charleston County. There was one case, but, you know, I think we've all seen multiple reports that the virus is probably already in our community. It's just not that big of a game. So until, if and until that happens, please try to follow the guidelines that are given out nationally and statewide. Maintain social distance, wash your hands thoroughly, be respectful of other states and try to limit your exposure to large crowds of people as best you can. Especially for those folks who are elderly and have compromised immune systems. And there, other than that, I wish I had a definitive answer, but I don't. My heart goes out to our businesses, like you mentioned earlier. We don't have a, you and I discussed this last night, we don't have a mandate from the state yet. I know that some restaurants are voluntarily closing their, their interim dining. And I can't imagine the effect that's having on some folks who's likely who depends on that industry. You know, my heart goes out to them and I think about this all day long. I'll think about it all night long. I wake up thinking about it. So right now, let's do the best we can do. And, you know, I don't know if you're technically supposed to say this or not, but I am. I think we just all need to be brave.
Chief Clark, you got a point?
Those guys, those ladies, I should say, those guys, they're doing a lot behind the scenes people don't know about. We have, they have been digging and finding materials that we need, hand sanitizer, masks, gloves. And I'll tell you, it's scarce right now and they've been doing a great job locating and finding it. Lot, lot of work's going on with those ladies up in the city hall right now.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you, Darren Duske, for updating with everything else.
You missing a lot of sleep too, Kathleen.
And I know Miss Bander with the chamber and everything, there, motel, motel taxes and everything, they're probably stretching.
Oh, we are.
Then we got the. Any more comments, questions, anything else? Your motion we hear? Thank you.